We're almost there. Yeah, countdown calendar or something. I'll be asking if anybody wants to say a prayer tonight, so if you'd like to, raise your hand if you happen to hear you. Okay, let's go ahead and get started with tonight's, uh, meeting. If you work with somebody, I'd like to give a prayer tonight. If not, I will. Is that him? Orders that come forth to say we give thanks to be allowed together and do your work for the city. We ask you to be on our hearts and our mind as we do the things for your city and for your love. We ask these things and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please tell me, a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
You're good. Thank you. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Rummel?
Here.
Councilmember Harbort?
Here.
Councilmember Weir is absent tonight. Councilmember Hefner?
Here.
Councilmember McMahon?
Here.
And Councilmember Shetron?
Here.
We have a call, thank you very much. And we have Facebook Live going. Uh, those watching on Facebook Live, uh, Ms. Jane is watching Facebook tonight, so make sure that page run, we hope, uh, and can answer questions off of Facebook. Also, if you need to text and message in, text it to Courtney at?
Five zero one two five nine one two seven three.
There you go. Moving forward, I entertain a motion to accept the January first special meeting.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also entertain a motion to accept the January eighteenth meeting minutes as presented.
Motion?
There's a motion, we have a second. Okay. All, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Department reports are in front of you for tonight. We have one, um, Ms. Robin has asked that the street department superintendent explain some of his numbers and where he gets them or whatever, so. Remain, would you come forward, please?
I am not picking on you. I want each department to do this to explain it better.
Okay, on street department, there's, there's street repair and maintenance. That's fourteen times we went out and patched streets. That's what that, what that comes down to. Whether it might be.
What?
You find it?
Not yet.
Hang on a second, let her find it.
It should be the packet that's stapled with?
Well, I found the packet, I just wanted to find his.
Okay.
I got probation now, five street.
Okay, that's where we went out and patched the streets fourteen times. Last month was a tough month anyway. And we'd also, on the maintenance part, when we go by and find, after rain, we find a puddle of water on the shoulders of the road, we try to drain that off. That's to get that water off our roads. Okay, and we worked on seven vehicles, vehicles last month. Building and, uh, facility repair. We worked on it, I'd say around fourteen times. Uh, that's what we got, because we write it down on calendar every day what we do. I know we did some gutter work, some trim work up in the coat office that wasn't done when it was remodeled, like it was a rainy day. And then they've been doing some painting up here, so I sent a guy up here to help paint.
Well, what do you do on your vehicles and equipment? What kind of work do you do on vehicles?
What do we do? We change brakes, we change oil, we do the small stuff that's, that we've got tools with to work with.
Street department also functions as our vehicle maintenance.
Okay.
Don't we have a mechanic, though?
Yeah, he, 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 he works outside the shop over there, what's that?
He works for the street department.
But he should be working on the vehicles.
Well, he was working on vehicles, that's what I'm saying, this is coming out of ours, out of our shop.
But he doesn't work on vehicles a hundred percent time every day.
No.
The street department, and then they schedule vehicles in.
We usually try to schedule any maintenance, stuff like that on rainy days. These things, most of it is brakes, oil changes and stuff like that. Uh, nothing major that we can do. And then, uh, colors, there we did it in maintenance there. Every time it rains, always, before it rains, always send the guys out, they'll drive the city and look at the inlets of the, of the colors. See if they're blocked, so they'll block them. And that's about every time they did that last. Brush and cleanup, they picked up trash long bleeder not, if you don't look at it. Long three sixty-seven and three nineteen, four times last month before this snow and stuff, yeah. You can pick it up in, now, two hours later, guess what? There's just about as much trash out there as when you went and picked it up. They usually go from here all the way to the animal shelter, from here all the way out to Dukes. Picking up trash. Uh, brush and cleanup, that, that's what that basically is. And seasonal assignment, I'll put that down as, as, as the snow days that we had, because we were working really weird hours. Long hours. And mowing, of course, we hadn't started that yet. We'll say we did get our new tractor in, thank you. Storm damage and cleanups, trees, trees and stuff like that. We picked up some, about five piles, they weren't storm damaged, they were people trimming their bushes and they called them storm damage. And they put them out there by the road. So you got, they'll sit there for long, you just say, okay, instead of them burning them right there, you know, we go out there and pick them up, so it won't look so nasty. Basically, that's what we've got there. So if anybody's got any questions, I mean, it's basically vague of what, you know, put, instead of having a sheet forty-seven miles long, you put several different categories under one, one topic.
Well, that's why I was asking. Well, like I said, I'm not picking on you.
I understand, I understand.
No, I'm gonna ask every department to explain their business.
Okay, no problem.
I, I don't, I look at this and I'm like, what is this?
Well, I'm shocked because, you know, you've been, you was here for two, two years and, you know, it is now showing up. But that's, I said, well, maybe she just needs to understand it a little bit better.
Yeah.
But some of the stuff what we can do, we can, we can, we can pile under street repairs and maintenance.
Well, plus, we have so many new people now, I was asking.
So. And we have been doing a lot of work at the ballpark, correct, drainage jump at the ballpark. And one corner over there, we cleaned up a whole bunch of, about, I guess it's probably gonna be a little over acre. Then we pulled up the trees and stuff and burned them and all that.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question only because it was brought up today. Will a lake, who mows that?
We mow it when we can get a tractor down in there.
Okay.
And I mean.
Well, only because it come up today. I didn't know it was a park or a street.
I've got, I've got a lady out there complaining about beavers, but she don't want me to, she wants to trap them and release them somewhere else.
How far do you have to take them away before they come back?
That's the question. Technically, right now, I ain't too sure of trap season unless we get a permit, but we can even touch them. And they're, they're gnawing on the little trees down there, so I went down there and looked. You can't put a trap out there worrying about kids getting in them.
Yeah.
So what we do, we do, how, how do we eradicate them? I mean, that's such the question.
Called game of fish, huh?
Yeah.
Well, you call game of fish, they may or may not come out of that area.
Yeah, that's the, we got rid of them all rolling towards the freeway, but an old tractor told me when you got them old big beaver huts, she said all you did is put a vacant sign on it, she said, it won't be long till another colony moves into that, that beaver.
One of those three is the one that's at the lake now.
Probably so.
Thank you.
Are we getting other questions? Before he gets away, sorry. I guess not. You're good. You're good. Yes, we'll have, uh, these departments will come up and, uh, go through theirs. So after that, do I have, I heard had a motion to accept the Department of Reports and Financials as they presented.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I noted, thank you very much, I just have it. Next on the agenda is Planning Commission report. Um, Gary could not be here tonight, so I was gonna talk about it, I was at the meeting, if I could find it.
It's the very last one, would you like my copy?
No, I think I got it right here. Presented for the Planning Commission last month was a Phase One of Paul's Place. Uh, there were some conditional things that need to be added to it on the preliminary plat, fire hydrants, have a cul-de-sac set up at the end. Paul's pla, place, you know where Bryant Street is, after on three nineteen, Patriots, uh, just this side of Bryant Street is open area between that and Overawson Cemetery. And that's where the, I think fifteen houses are gonna go on this subdivision in there. They're all gonna be on grinder pumps, uh, which will make it easier for our waterways, water to get transferred. And the grinder pumps by, uh, owner's assurance, builder's assurance will be their responsibility. And of course, there'll be sidewalks too, because it is in subdivision. Anyway, the, uh, Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat, so they can move forward on that. There's also an exception, acceptance, the resignation of William Tremaine. We'll talk about that in a little bit, but he is now a city employee, and later on the agenda, we'll talk about replacing him. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, accept the Planning Commission before it is presented.
First.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're good, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, this is Bob Wright. With Cruz and Associates, they're the ones that do, uh, do our bonding issues. Uh, they presented you with a package tonight, and he will go over it. He is the expert on this, I am not.
You want me to keep masks on?
Oh, you're good right there.
Okay, I'll try not to turn, shout out to. Uh, Mr. Mayor, appreciated. I am Bob Wright, I'm the City Managing Director, Cruz and Associates, based in La Rock, actually up in Fayetteville. Uh, I've actually worked with and for the city org for about thirty years now, uh, on multiple financings. And what we're here tonight, as we've done numerous times with, with the city over the years, is interest rates are, are just like the stock market, they're up and down. So if there's a, a chance, uh, the rates are down and we can save the citizens of Ward some money, uh, we can come in and look to refinance. So that's what, uh, what we're looking at here tonight and answering the questions. Uh, on the handout that I gave each of you, uh, there's a couple things I always wanna just cover, and this first page is, is interest rates. And municipal market is a multi-trillion dollar market, uh, and it kinda typically flows with the federal treasury rates. Uh, but you can see, and, and I, I kinda took this chart back a little bit, just so you can see what happened back in, in March, when all this hit. Uh, it, it was interesting times, what rates did in a short amount of time. Uh, historic movement in the market, they're on the left side of the, of the screen. On the right side, since the election, rates have been inching up. The green line is treasury rates on the thirty-year out, out long, so if you look at refinancing your mortgage at the bank, you notice that rates have been going up on, if you haven't locked in. That black line is where municipal rates are. Uh, and I actually met the mayor, uh, last month, and since then, that, that far right side of that black line, rates have spiked up a little bit. Um, so, and they're gonna continue to move until we can get this locked in. We can't do anything until July. Uh, now's the time to get started on it, because we've got some documents, we have to get together with the, the attorneys and all that. So it takes a couple months to where we then come back and show you where, you know, before we pull the trigger. Uh, but that's what we're dealing with right now. Second page, uh, is the city's current outstanding water and sewer debt. Uh, and I've broken it out individually, you can see there's three loans that the water and sewer system has outstanding right now. Uh, there's a two thousand sixteen bond issue, and I put a label there. The rate that you're paying on the sixteen bonds is three point oh nine percent. We can pay it off October of this year, which, which puts us in that July timeframe. That's why I said we can actually close this in July. Uh, but you can see you're paying about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars per year principal interest on that one bond issue that pays out in two thousand forty-three. That middle column, you've got a USDA loan from two thousand sixteen, at two and three eighths percent. You're paying a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars per year on that. It goes all the way up till two thousand fifty-five. Uh, and then you've got a two thousand seventeen USDA loan, that's three and three eighths percent. Paid about forty-five thousand five hundred dollars per year on that, and it pays out in two thousand forty-three. The two loans we're looking to pay off is the, the first one to two thousand sixteen, and that last one, two thousand seventeen. We're gonna leave the two thousand sixteen loan, for one, the interest rate is good. But second, USDA has what's, uh, what's attached to it from a federal provision, which is called nineteen twenty-six B. Uh, and it actually gives you the city of Ward, um, protection from any other cities or water systems encroaching on, uh, on your system. And it gives you some good strength to say, you're not gonna come in and take over any part of our system that, you know, as you talked today, the Planning Commission, maybe that's a part. It kinda wraps you, gives you some federal protections. We leave that outstanding and you're protected by the federal loan for a number of years. So that far right side, right now, your mortgage on the system is about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year principal interest. I don't have your two thousand twenty audit yet, hopefully that'll come in, uh, fairly short order, we can kinda add that to the mix for this next page. How is financially, how's the city water and sewer system doing? Just look at that two thousand nineteen column, this is right from your audit. Water revenues, sewer revenues, install of your meter revenue, water reconnection fees, delinquent penalties. There's a miscellaneous income and interest income. You add all that up, in two thousand nineteen, the water and sewer system generated three point five six million dollars in revenue. They op, the operating expenses to operate the system was two point nine million. So the system generated six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in income, um, after operating the system. If you look at the audit, now, if you've ever looked at a, a utility audit on a water system, uh, there's a line item in the operating expense called depreciation and amortization. That's a non-cash item, that's an accounting measure that just, uh, is, is there to depreciate the system, it's not something that actually the city is spending. That's five hundred and thirty-six thousand, so that, since it's not an outflow, we add it back to the mix to basically say, you collected revenues from your, your ratepayers, you operated your system, you, you had a million one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars left over, uh, at the end of the day. We said on the first page, your current mortgage is six hundred and twenty-three thousand, so you covered your debt. Now, your debt service coverage is about a hundred and ninety-two percent, and that's good. Uh, that certainly is, um, uh, you, you have a minimum requirement, you have to have a hundred and ten percent. You're currently a hundred and ninety-two percent. Uh, so anything we're talking about today is, is simply savings, no rate increase or anything like that. Uh, so financially, you're doing, you're doing fine. Flip over to the next page. This just breaks down the, the makeup of, of what a bond issue would be. We, there's three columns, the two thousand sixteen refinance, the seventeen refinance, look on, on the issue summary. We would propose issuing six point eight million dollars in new debt, uh, Series two thousand twenty-one debt. At two hundred and thirteen thousand, you've got reserve funds that are set aside in the bank right now, uh, two hundred and thirteen thousand. Since it's already restricted funds and set aside towards debt, we bring that over, that's money you don't have to borrow. Uh, debt service funds, you pay monthly over to the trustee on the two thousand sixteen bond, so depending on if we close this in July, there could be some monies at about ninety-six thousand. That's basically the pile of money we have, uh, the source, that we're already spending on down below. Uh, it would take about six million nine twenty-nine to pay off the two loans. So we're actually going down in principal mountain, uh, from what you currently have right now, so six million nine twenty-nine to pay that off. Cost of issuance are our fees, trustee fees, legal fees, all of that to get a bond issue, uh, done on a tax exempt basis out in the market, about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, I'm, I'm making an estimate now, in the past, we have not qualified for bond insurance. Bond insurance is, um, it's basically a credit enhancement, it, it lowers your interest rate. Uh, in the past, the system was not quite big enough, you've gotten to the point now that this is gonna catch the attention of new firms, uh, to insure it. So a one-time fee of thirty-four thousand, thereabouts, and it would lower your, your borrowing cost. And then that, uh, next last line item, surety bond, instead of setting up a cash reserve, that two hundred and thirteen thousand above is gonna sit there, you know, earning very little interest right now. So instead of setting the cash reserve aside, we get the bond insurance company to give us a, a bond insurance policy, reserve policy, one-time fee, and then that's covered. So that's the breakdown of what a, a transaction would look like, uh, as far as the, the flow of funds and all that. Next page, debt debt service. And this would just be the new mortgage, we're not extending the debt, we're not shorting the debt, we're just saying, you're paying this rate right now, in the current market, we can lower it down, and what's it gonna do for you? The, the key thing to look at right here is down below, under the yield statistics, there is a line item called true interest cost. Take, uh, it's just like going to the bank when you get the, you know, you've got an interest rate, but then you pay the, the costs and all that. So what is your true bar, true borrowing cost? Two point three two percent. So as we said on that second page, you're paying anywhere from three point oh nine on the bond issue and three and three eighths on the USDA. Right now, we can lower it down to two point three two percent. That's where your savings would come in, and that factors in the cost of issuance, so that's your mint borrowing cost. So that next page, debt service comparison, what does this do for your ratepayers, what's it do for your citizens of Ward, kinda savings? And this really takes the two bond issues, two loans we're paying off, compared to the, to the proposed two thousand twenty-one bond issue savings on the far right side. That's a net savings, that's net after the cost of issuance, and that's all built in. Thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars per year, uh, in, in annual savings. Bottom line, right now is about six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars net cash, reducing your mortgage on the system. So that's essentially money that you, uh, the, the water and sewer system board does not have to pay to, to essentially wealthy bond investors that currently hold your outstanding debt. So that's the savings, if we do qualify for the bond insurance, which I do believe we will. I wanted just to go ahead on the next page and, and show you the difference in, in why it's a benefit. If we can't get bond insurance, um, there's still savings, it's still about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per year savings, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars total over time. Um, but that just shows you the difference, that if we can kinda push and fight with the firms in New York and get them to, to wrap the credit around this deal, we can save you another couple hundred thousand dollars at least. And then I just included on the last page, just so you can see, it can kinda compares to the, to the first page of where you currently have outstanding debt. You'll be down to two loans, the sixteen USDA and the two thousand twenty-one bonds, and your principal interest, your mortgage per year is about five hundred and eight thousand dollars per year. So it's just a, uh, a simple refinance, we've done it a number of times in the past. The, the steps, and we're not, I'm not looking for any, I didn't bring any resolutions or anything tonight, I've, I've talked to the mayor and I just asked if we could come down and present that and answer any questions that y'all might have tonight. Uh, since it does take some time to get documents together, um, typically on something like this, a, a city council will say, yeah, go get with the attorneys, get the, them to draw up all the documents. We know that there's still gonna be three months of interest rate exposure. Uh, we probably would come back to you at your May, uh, meeting, we would, since we have all the documents, probably ready to pull the trigger. Um, if rates continue to go up, if we can't save you money, you're not paying me a penny, you're not paying the attorneys or anybody a penny. So it doesn't cost you anything if we can't lock this in and lower rate and save us money. Rates gotta move around, if we come back in May, when we're kinda ready to lock it in, and, and maybe that savings is, is three hundred thousand, maybe it's two hundred and fifty thousand. Y'all make that determination at that point, say, that's still real money, yeah, go ahead and, and, and lock us in and save us whatever you can. Or at some point, you know, we've seen it get down to that hundred thousand dollar range, and cities are like, yeah, let's, let's hold off and see if we can't get lucky with rates going back down. So that's where we are right now, is, you know, just to see what kinda feedback that, and questions y'all might have. Um, and then we would need to, to get with the attorneys to, to start working on all the legal documents.
Very good. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Bob, he's the expert in bonds, the high dollars?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
If we did this, I shouldn't say if, but how, how long would it be before, say the rates go down in a year? This other one, that's two point three, how soon could we, is it, is it, do we have to wait any time?
We have always, um, just because we don't know what's gonna go on in the market, I've, I've been at Cruz thirty-four years, and luckily, my whole career, rates have generally trended down. I mean, we were in the fifteen percent range when I started, and here's where, you know, we're historical lows now. We've always put a very short window, uh, redemption, a call date, that allows us, you know, in the city to refinance if rates are lower. And that's why we're here tonight, is when we did the two thousand sixteen bonds, we said, you know, within five years, we're gonna, the investors want some type of, of lockout period. Um, traditionally, bonds would be ten-year lockout, and we're like, that doesn't give you the flexibility, so we've usually put five years. So that's why we're here on those, on the two loans. If rates drop down on that USDA, down to where that, that middle column, that USDA made sense, we would need to discuss it simply for the fact of that nineteen twenty-six B, that federal, uh, encroachment protection. Y'all know your system better than I do, I, obviously, I've known y'all for thirty years, but you know if there's any other cities or water systems or anything like that that might be trying to come in and, and poach off some of your, your residents, that I don't know. So that's, that is a, a discussion to be had, to say, is it worth any kinda savings if it gets to that point? But I, we worked with Lenoquay, we did the same thing with them last year and saved on the wholesale system. I've done just about every utility in the state and, and I work across the country, but, um, this is just a typical, no new money, just a plain refinance and saving awesome money.
So much to refinance your house, but much larger dollars.
Slightly bigger. Few more zeros.
Few more zeros. Any other questions for Bob? Have we done? Um, I need to attend a motion to, um, allow Bob and the Cruz and Associates to start department paperwork, uh, to get this going.
I make a motion, we do.
Second.
A motion and second. Like a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harbort?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rummel?
Yes.
Excellent, thank y'all very much for your time tonight. We'll get started, actually, first thing in the morning, I'll, I'll put a call into the attorneys and, um, and we'll just go from there. And if, you know, if, if we're lucky and, and rates will hold off for a little while, uh, then you'll see us back in May, uh, to kinda give you the, here's where we stand and give you one last chance to look at it before we pull the trigger.
Yeah, absolutely.
So y'all still have control totally of what, what happens. Thank y'all again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Save us some money. Especially on that water.
Y'all, good evening.
A little technical difficulty up there, apparently I didn't plug in the computer, so it died. So if she plugs in, I'll get it going again, get back on, go to meetings. I'll plug some. While she's working on that, we'll go ahead and continue. Next on the agenda, the GOAT committee, uh, had a meeting here tonight. Mr. Eric Culver was the chairman member. Would you like to give us a report on the committee?
Sure, two-thirds of the committee voted not to the right to extend the, or keep the veto. We felt that if somebody really truly wanted goats, they could come to the council meeting and apply for it, ask for a waiver, and that'd be a case-by-case basis.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. That's the, uh, recommendation of the, of the committee. Still working? All right. She'll hang on just a second, let me see if I get this computer fired back up. While that continues, I can, I can multitask, I believe. Next on the agenda is ordinance, uh, two oh one, two thousand twenty-one dash zero three. Would you read the title, please?
Ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero three, and ordinance amending ordinance W dash one dash ninety-three, creating a city and planning commission, setting terms of men, members, elections of officers, rules, employment of assistants, expenditures, powers and duties, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'll open the floor for discussion, and I'll give you a little background on this. I gave you a package, you noticed the nineteen ninety-three, um, orders that were written to, uh, establish the planning commission. Well, I may be wrong, maybe I cannot multitask and tie at the same time and talk.
It's got strange parts written there.
It's old, yes.
It's right behind it.
Okay, I think we're back running on that. Okay, I think we're back running on that. Is it technology fun? Sometimes when it works properly. Okay, I apologize for delay, that was my fault. Okay. So we'll open the floor up for discussion on this particular ordinance. The amendment adds some things I think we need to add, clarify some things. The planning commission member cannot be a member of full or part-time employee of the city, does not exclude, excludes volunteer firefighter, elementary police officers in life. Says in there that planning commission members must reside in the city, must remain so during duration of their employment, and they changed some state laws and it changed the numbers since the ninety-three version. Any discussion? I entertain a motion to put ordinance two thousand twenty-one on its first reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Motion carries. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and put ordinance two thousand twenty-three, suspend the rules, reading in second and third.
Make a motion.
The motion's there. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Motion carries. I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero three.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
One of them had a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
And Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Before I announce results, I forgot to ask for any public comment, excuse me. Do we have any on this one?
I don't think so.
We'll be out there. Okay, good. Motion carries. I entertain a motion for the emergency policy that's enacted right away.
A motion, second.
And second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-one dash zero three is approved. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is a resolution, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven. Would you read the title, please?
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero seven, a resolution accepting the donation of real property from R and S Home Builders LLC in Huntington Place subdivision to be used as needed by the city of ward and for other purposes.
I open the floor for discussion.
I drove by today, went out there, walked around, there's a lot of construction, trash, garbage, concrete, dirt, shingles, bricks, all the various other things. I know that the city is going to require the contractor to clean everything up.
Right.
But my concern is, I still have better taste in my mouth over Willa Lake. When that got turned over to the city, the city said, we're going to build you a nice little park, we're going to do walking trails around there, it was in the plan, nothing happened. Nothing against the street department, no, those guys are busy, and they're not really here to mow everybody's yard and whatnot. They come out, my neighbors and I, we are the ones who generally walk around and pick up people's trash and stuff like that, so. And I, when I was there, I was talking to a lady who lived across the street from that there, and she was not fond of this idea at all, and I just think it's a bad idea. And I think we're setting a bad precedent, because when somebody wants to give you something free, they're generally a reason why.
Well, I'll tell you the reason why. That lot, it was supposed to been laid out a different way, and they couldn't end up buying the property behind, so just, and the final plaque got put in that way. They could go in there and put a couple houses in there, they'd have to come back to the city, to the planning commission and city council for approval for that, because it's not on the final plaque. They don't really want to do that, because it's just an odd-shaped lot. They want to donate to the city, and there's a suggested plan that I gave to you all about that, having a walking trail and expand the pond area, and have some benches, I got that. And to your point about not building a pavilion, I'm not sure what happened to all that in the past. I don't, I was on the city council when some of that went on, but I'm not, we had to apply for a loan at one time or a grant, and it didn't go through, but we've already made steps and got the engineering on this, and there's some loan money coming up now, by June first, that we could apply for this, if we got to that point. But prior to that, if accepted by the city, if y'all approve the resolution we accepted, I want to have a public hearing, a public meeting with folks, and see what they want out there. They may not want a walking trail, they may want to just open green space, which will be responsible for keeping the clean and loading all that kind of stuff. But, you know, I don't, there's some sour points in Willa Lake from other standpoints also, how we got it.
Yes.
It was kind of just thrust upon us, if I remember right, in the past. But this is a situation that is potential to have a little green space out there. If I think it's done right, it'd be a good thing, but that's just my.
That's if it's done right.
That's if it's done.
Right, it's like if you get the grant or not. If you don't get the grant, it's going to be like Willa Lake.
Well, if you don't get that grant, we've talked another meeting, that'd be our plan for Parks and Recreation. And there's good, there's good grants out there for walking trails.
This concept looks just like Willa Lake's.
Exactly.
But I understand what you're saying about walking trails, but aren't we in the works for making a walking trail from Greenbrier to here to Little Rock and Gavitt?
Well, that's a totally separate thing.
I know, but we're still going to have the trails.
That's a, that's going to be a walk, yeah, that's going to be down the road, years down the road. That's a multi-year project. This is here and now.
So I'm saying, I like your idea of asking the people around, because.
That's what I mean, this is just a concept, this is just a concept that we came up with, but it's not the end all.
Another fishing pond, they wear this one out.
I don't know, and part of the problem.
A lot of people fish.
We'll just have to see, you know, if we, what the citizens want and what we can apply for.
Well, once this is cleaned up as far as all the building stuff, who's going to be responsible for mowing it and picking up trash?
We will, the city, I think.
Okay, do we have manpower to do that?
Just add it to the street department's mowing cycle.
Because from what I understand, they don't have manpower to do it at Willa Lake.
Right.
A lot of times we get into, there's, and you know this, there's personal property that goes up there. We have an easement around there, but getting through there, getting with a tractor through there is sometimes an issue.
On my side, down Willa Lake, there's easements all the way down, they can go to. So they can get to it, it's just a matter of do they have the time and the people? You know, and Willa Lake is not that big of a place. If you look at Huntington Place, that's a couple acres, that's going to take some time. And I will tell you this for a fact, that people come out there, and I don't know what it is, they feel like the ground is their trash receptacle, because there's no trash receptacles out there. Who's going to pick that stuff up? Are the residents going to truly be happy about that, you know?
Well, that's what we'd have a public hearing, and the same thing happens at most of the lakes.
Right.
And if we put trash cans out there, you know what happens? Everybody puts all their trash in it, dead animals, and dead fish, and it becomes a real problem after that.
I have received a comment.
Okay.
Alexandra, who lives on Chesapeake Drive, just asked the question, when will something be done about the debris pile on Chesapeake Drive and Huntington Place?
As part of this process, regardless of whether we take it or not.
Well, and that was my other point, is to point out that that place is atrocious. I remember when they were building up in Willa Lake in the house, and we called the city, and the city had the contractors out there and picked that stuff up. I would be very upset if I was a resident, and I was paying tax dollars to look at this junk.
So can we just put a house on that section of land?
We can't.
No.
No, that'd be up to the developer, and the developer may not want to do anything. No, we, I mean, the developer has to come back to the city, to the planning commission, and plan it all out, because it's not on the final plaque, and get it approved by the planning commission, hopefully y'all.
I don't think we have a problem with accepting a free, it's just maintenance on that free. That needs to be set, that it's going to be done.
Oh, it is.
Can I stand up and say something?
Yeah. Ms. Rommel wants to step out of her clerk, clerk role, and as a citizen of Huntington Place.
Yes, I'm a city clerk, but I'm also a part of the rural, and I'm a citizen that lives in Huntington Place. And this has kind of been talked about on our city, or our neighborhood Facebook page. Our residents in Huntington Place are very active, we all walk the neighborhood. We all try to keep it very, very clean. There's been lots of talk as to what is going to happen with this area, and it has been suggested by the builder that they were going to try to put a private drive in there and put a couple houses back there, but I don't know that that, that space between the two houses is big enough, one for a city, and for them to put houses, and that I don't know because of the drainage issue back in that area. That area is, was technically designed for, what was that pond? It was the runoff for.
Oh, that's just a retention pond, right?
It's just a retention pond, is what it was. So I don't even know if that land, it could be developed to homes. I ask you guys, if you don't accept this as a donation of land with the opportunity to make this a green space, then what is your solution? What will, what will happen to that land? What is the alternative? Is it just going to be left and maybe cleaned up of construction, but just left and overgrown? And as a citizen, I would like it to see the opportunity to have green space. That neighborhood is out on thirty-eight, we have, we're disconnected from this city. We have no opportunity to try to use the city parks, and I think that that would be a great opportunity for our neighborhood and for the neighboring neighborhoods to have a green space to be able to utilize, even if it's just a walking trail, and nothing more than a walking trail.
I don't think any of us are against accepting free land. I think it's.
Maintenance.
Other issues, yeah, other issues and the planning commission, like what all was, you know, they, when they drew all this up, did they not see that one little plant that was going to be off-center or?
They, like I said, they were anticipating buying land adjacent to.
I'm totally not against it. I think we make a motion to table it until we have the public and get like more of what Courtney said, of more public.
That would come after, we couldn't have a post meeting.
After we vote on this.
We'd have to accept it. And if nothing came out of it, we just placed it, we ended up mowing it with our new tractor.
Sailor to bring down free land.
We have any citizen input? See some folks back there, okay. We'll make sure, anything I please do? Okay, anything else?
I don't have any.
Put the lady on the contest, people, get that cleaned up. And it should have been cleaned up.
Yeah.
It should, it should have been.
Yes, it should have been.
It wasn't, so we will take care of it.
I got pictures of the guys who are interested in working up there.
I can see it.
We all know what it looks like.
Well, I don't think you do, but.
I think we can.
And everybody knows where this is at, correct? I mean, I can pull it up on a map if you need to see where it's at. Okay, any further discussion?
I, before I go, yes, I'd like to actually know what the city's plan and what they're writing, because if we take this over, what are we going to do?
I need to get it cleaned up.
Well, the contractor has to clean it up first.
I need to get it cleaned up.
We'll get it cleaned up pretty soon.
What, what's the day, a few days?
I know, Steve will have to get the old contractor. Get cleaned up, hey, we'll get it cleaned up soon. You know, I don't put anything in writing that says, you know, I just have to take my word for it as a CEO, that yes, when I add that to the mailing, or mailing sheet, mowing schedule, and just like everything else, and that'll be part of the mowing schedule. The street department adding some more, two more acres for them to mow.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, make motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one zero seven.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Harbord.
No.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
Four oh one?
Yes.
Four oh one, motion carries. Thank you, council. I hope my feature's there. We'll get it done. Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero eight, read the title, please.
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk to close out various certificates of deposit and depositing same into money market accounts at First Arkansas Bank and Trust.
We've got these CDs that are listed there that are drawing point one, point two, point zero five interest. We did some research, and Arkansas Bank and Trust is offering one point, one point one percent interest. It's not a whole lot, you can't get any interest on anything anymore, but it'll be some. And so we're proposing to cash out these CDs and open up the subsequent checking accounts at Arkansas First, and withdraw more interest. Open the floor for discussion. Hearing none, anything on public comment? Any public comment from within? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one zero eight.
I make a motion, we accept.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rommel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, council, we'll get that taken care of tomorrow, hopefully. Next up on the agenda is a situation we have out at Nan's Place, and Nan's Place is subdivision out behind what was Duke's Place, in that area. If you look on the maps that was provided, and I can do this, hang on a second. Okay, hang on a second, we got Facebook issue, we need to correct that.
The map?
Page nine.
I just tell them to page.
Very good. Just so we all speak on the same here. Okay, it's up on the screen now, for everybody to say sorry for having good technical problems tonight. Anyway, at Nan's Place, as you can see in your package, or if you look up here on the screen, there's a drainage that goes down through here, if you follow my cursor, and stops right here. When this subdivision was created many years ago, there's a swell down through here that was supposed to have been carried on all the way down to the right side. Over time.